I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Okay. I don't know if that's the same one that we're working on. Same one?
The consent agenda?
No, but you have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Right, that's the forward. The one that you had the motion to adopt.
She added something. So one of those details.
So, so Mayor, just for the council minutes, I actually wasn't at the meeting. Either of the meetings last time, unfortunately. I didn't manage to show that I was in attendance.
I thought you were here.
I thought you came at the last.
Yeah, you did at the very last, at the very end.
I did?
Yeah, you came to the second part.
Yeah, you did come to the goal set, but I'm pretty sure you were there.
Even after I was in class?
I even have you recorded.
Oh, really? I guess I made a mistake then. My mind was in class.
Well, in fact, my mind was.
My top three was in class.
But. You were really there.
Did you still replay the video? The video, I know Robert has a video.
I move to accept the agenda as presented with, um, uh, maybe some visual proof to be provided later. Not absolutely.
I don't think it's time for the earlier.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's move down to, yeah, speakers, communication, informational items. Officer Mike Patterson, you cannot hear?
He'll be here.
Uh, he had a call, he'll be here for me.
Yeah, okay.
He shouldn't be here, so.
In a minute.
Dave, what's the?
Well, I'm here to ask some help, I think, for, oh. Dave Hadley, and what else you want?
No, just your name.
Mr. Dave.
Okay. Dave Hadley and, or Darla Peg.
Darla Peg, okay.
You want some help?
Yeah, we'd like some help with our neighbors. I've been putting up with it for probably close to twenty years. And, huh?
The house that was east of yours.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, Bill Brown. And he seems to be, he's been told a lot of times, and he gets it almost cleaned up. Cars are gone, there's several of them there, trailer houses. And next thing you know, they come back, same rigs. So he gets to take them somewhere. But I've got a trailer in the alley behind me. There's, I got pictures, if you guys want to see them. But it's, it's garbage everywhere, right up to my property boundary. And, and Darla, she's got some neighbors next to her that I think there was something done about it last year, but.
Yeah, for hours, she came and told them about their trash, that I had, I believe I had came here and talked to you. And it's just constant. And the other neighbor next to me on the other side, so there's both neighbors. And one's renting the house, and I've talked to Bob Wade, who owns the house, because their trees destroyed my fence. And now the kids are riding their mini bikes and motorcycles in the backyard. I mean, it's just, you know, I don't know, I don't want to be calling the cops all the time. I did call a couple weeks ago, an officer went by because just, I mean, he's constantly going around. And I know my fence already got broke last year, and they're gonna break it again. But it's, it's just constant, you know, and it's just, these guys need to be picking up their trash. My other neighbor was just kicking boxes out of his front. He's disabled, I totally agree. But I spent time last year, which I shouldn't have done, um, out there trimming, you know, cutting the trees up so we can haul it off to the dump, and neighbor his bushes. So I'm just.
And we're not the only ones in our neighborhood. My neighbor Esther, well, she couldn't get off, she's working, she wanted to be here. Uh, Doug and Chrissy Adams, they live on that other end of the block. And also, um.
Daryl Lynn probably where they came, but I didn't get it down there.
Yeah, Doug, yeah, what's Doug's, uh, last name?
Who?
Doug lives next to Esther.
Could I ask where these properties are at?
Yeah, I, I'm on 155 South L Street, but it's the block above me, which is your street.
912 South K Street. That whole alleyway, just drive down a whole alleyway, down K Street, L Street, or well, that's just the back.
I do, oh, I can add one comment. I did just send out some letters to Mr. Brown. I just did that, certified, and we just got.
Okay.
So I know that his is being addressed, but I am not positive if I, last year, I think when I first got here, I sent one to this Mr. Wade, but I don't know if I did this time.
What was that?
So, Wade, the owner.
Oh, Bob, yeah, yeah.
And I haven't sent one this year, because any time I get a complaint this year, I'm.
He's the owner.
Right.
But he, I've already talked to him, Roberta, and it's just like, well, I'm really sick, or my wife has been really sick, there's really not much I can do, you know, and it's like, and also, I wanted to know, because at one time they had, I think they have five dogs now, but they had six dogs and three cats. I don't know what the, the, the policy is or ordinance is in town, but if they do, they should be getting these licensed, all these animals licensed and stuff, and, you know, taking care of them. Um, they don't clean up the crap, excuse me, but, you know, it's really becoming nuisance. I can't even enjoy my outside because of the smell during the summers.
Well, last year Esther come to me over the fence, said, where's all these flies coming from? I don't know, I haven't really noticed them, but yeah, they were bad. But it was under a block, and they had all kinds of just trash still in the bags, piles of it.
Well, I will send new letters out to the people around your property. But we are gonna follow up, and I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
That's one of my goals.
And I don't mean to interrupt you either, but you can drive around Lakeview anymore, and there's gobs of them. It's just not our block, it's everywhere.
And that, that is one of the goals that, when I came here, was to help clean up the town, to try to get it cleaned up. And we are going to have, the Lakeview Community Partnership is having a dump day. They did that a few years ago, so there will be three dumpsters placed around town, and that was April 29.
If you guys want to look at these two pictures I got, I'm, you can scroll through.
I believe somebody's also was living in that trailer, was talking about.
Yeah, they might still be here, this is the alleyway.
Bill Brown's?
Yeah, the boy, Michael. But now the trailer's caved in, so I don't see the lights on it anymore. And I know at one time, you weren't supposed to be able to live in a trailer unless it was, right, because it was.
Wash basins, there's garbage, there's rugs.
That's not acceptable.
Well, it isn't, but the thing about it is, with him, and I guess he's, he's not really good, but he's never been good since I've been here, but he's been able to draw a pension off of something and get his own wood, but he can't keep, he can't clean up, you know, so.
Well, and one thing we can do is, you know, the town can place a lien on it, and then, you know, go ahead and clean it up. And place a lien, and that may be the avenue we have to take.
Maybe.
So I don't know.
But I think it needs to be enforced throughout the town, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
It used to always be.
This is the one I'm interested in.
That's gone. That didn't, I cleaned that up pretty fast. But anyway, it always seemed to be way south, you know, is where we all, even, back in high school, right? That was the spot, but it, now it's, it's throughout the city anymore.
Well, the people moved out from, across from Bill Brown, they sold their house and left because of him.
Yeah, they did.
And, you know, if I had to go somewhere else, I probably would, I mean, but I still.
I don't want to go anywhere else, you know, but it does decrease, I think, our property value, even though our property taxes go up every year, so.
But I understand, and that's like I said, that's one of my things, is, is really, it is a goal that you have to follow.
Yeah, because they're living, so they're not worrying about fixing the houses up, because, oh, I'm just renting this, so I'm not gonna worry. But I contacted Bob, because I had to replace my sewer, because of their trees and stuff. And, you know, it was a fortune, so, and I had no trees in my backyard, but it's from theirs, so.
But I know we can't do anything on our own, I mean, you can go argue with them, but that won't help, so.
Well, and there are procedures that we have to follow.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
We just can't send Travis or one of us men out, but the letter comes first, and then there's the follow-up procedures. And sometimes it feels like it takes forever to get it done, but, um.
Well, at least we're getting started early this year, instead of in the dead of summer when.
Before maybe the flies arrive.
Right.
Yeah.
And they're out, but.
Do you know the ordinance of animals? I'd like to know, you know, because I know when they're, when they leave, their dogs are constantly barking in the house, and they're, I have a couple big dogs, and they're going through the house, but I like to know what the ordinance is for how many dogs and cats you can have in town.
I don't know that there is an ordinance on cats, but there's.
Three dogs and two cats, but I don't know.
I don't think there's an ordinance on cats, but I, I, there's a couple people who'd be in violation of the cat, of the cat law.
Well, I know that, but I heard that there was, I, I thought those were.
We'll, we'll need to really check that out.
Yeah, pardon me?
We'll need to really check that out.
Well, I think if you have so many dogs, then you have to get a kennel license, but I'm not sure if that's my old ordinance, I'm making that.
Can you have chickens? Where you get some chickens, they eat the flies.
That's true. If we adopted a chicken ordinance somewhere, but I don't know that we can right now, I don't think that's legal there.
Well, Mr. Hadley and Ms. Peg, I, I would like to commend you for coming forward and, and to our attention, because that's what it takes, is, you know, we don't have an officer that goes out and patrols our town. But if the neighbors can't help out their neighbors in, you know, a fashionable manner, then they need to turn to the town, and we need to enforce our ordinances. So I'm glad that you came forward, and don't feel like you're bothering us, because it's something that we all need.
Glad you took time to listen to us.
Well, you know, I'm here too, so if something doesn't improve or something, because I can't, y'all always get back out, you know, but we are.
I understand, and I know that you guys were working on that thing, and then I, I thanked Mr., I thanked Travis, because I seen Lawn Fart went over there, and I said, I want to thank you, and he, he didn't know what I was talking about. And I says, well, the trash, so then he got on it immediately, you know, and sent officers over there, and they went, told them to have it out of there, and someone said, hey, they're moving, they took eight loads, dude, and I go, that was trash? Oh, really?
We are gonna keep on it.
We've been working on it for years.
Well, maybe you brown, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet, thank you guys.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you. Bye, guys.
Mike, you up?
I'm up, I'm here. Big audience.
That's right.
So I guess the reason I'm here is, uh, we had a meeting with, uh, Roberta, probably, what, two months ago, three months ago, maybe? And, uh, so any time we go to trainings, she would like us to come down here and tell you why we went to the trainings, and what benefit it is to us, and to justify it, to, you know, we're not just wasting money, time, and that stuff. The last training I attended was, um, it's called a Thin Blue Line Training, it's to help deal with mentally disabled people or people with mania, who are dealing with, you know, drug problems or disability problems. And basically, the training was, you know, they brought this, uh, DPSST, which runs the whole, you know, Department of Oregon, and they brought this guy in, who's a world-renowned psychologist and mental health person. And he's going around teaching police officers and mental health people how to deal with talking to people when they're in a mania, or they're disabled, or, you know, uh, in that realm. And it's called the Thin Blue Line, and, uh, it basically just gives you more tools to your belt, instead of going hands-on right away, to kind of understand what the situation's going on, and if, you know, if you can determine whether, you know, he's autistic, or he's out of it due to drugs, or if you can, you know, try to figure out how to talk, talk him out of a dangerous situation, you know, or a kid who's lost and doesn't really trust people, you know, teach you how to talk with your hands, and not, you know, stuff like that. And it was a really great training, it was eight hours long, but, uh, he was a great instructor, and I learned a lot. And, uh, he's very beneficial to me, and I think he'll be beneficial to, if I ever encounter somebody like that, so. And I pass it along to everybody else on the course too, so, and give them paperwork and books and stuff like that, so. But that's kind of, kind of what we did, so.
We need to share in that.
Yeah, that's our shirt, alright.
Good job. Thanks.
I guess I jumped in there and hit a, we're into public comments. Okay, I'm doing business, we got a resolution, eight ninety-seven, First Amendment to annexation of the SOAR, six LLC.
The one that we were given separately, is that the?
No, the one that was given separately is the ordinance, uh, for the franchise agreement. Yes, yes, resolution number eight ninety-eight, um, is the resolution, and then right behind it's the First Amendment, the whole thing. I don't know if you usually look at those or not, but I just.
Are we doing eight ninety-seven or eight ninety-eight?
Eight ninety-eight is the solar, isn't it?
Or eight ninety-seven? Is the solar?
Eight ninety-seven is DOC.
Yeah, it says here, eight ninety-seven is DOC.
Yeah, so those are reversed, I guess. I know I'm there, but I'm just.
The main gist of this is just that there's a twenty-foot, uh, right away to, giving to them, so they can, they can lay it down. I haven't read over this, I have no problem with this, I think it's important to fix the amendments, it's something where I agree to, give some clarification, so, Mayor, I move that we approve resolution eight ninety-seven in the matter of the First Amendment to the annexation agreement with OR Solar Six A LLC, which is gorgeous.
No, I think, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now take ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, you denied it.
Well, I do, I went out, uh, okay. This is on the annexation of the solar, I always thought, but we just gave.
No, we just did that, we're doing DOC. She's got, we're going backwards, so we go down to the one that's marked eight ninety-seven. She did that just to.
This is the DOC?
Yes.
With the monthly operational charges for geothermal services.
And could you give us just a hint of how, uh, this went? Did we get, uh, an amendment on how the rates that we were charging, did that come out a little more equitable?
It did, you know, and there may be a little bit of variable, but I really worked with Jeff and then Doug at DOC, and then I worked with, Daryl came in and he helped to try to make sure that everything, you know, is better than it was.
Yeah.
And I really hope what happens, and Doug, who is, has left DOC, he's on a temporary assignment right now, but he really helped and wanted to get this done before he leaves, you know, so we've been working on this for several months, just to make sure.
So we're in a better position than we were.
So, I just have to do the BTU stuff, which is gonna be more really bad.
Yeah, but.
There should be a monitor on that.
Yeah, and I believe there is, yeah.
Get you a readout.
Yeah.
Thanks for that clarification, I think we need to do this as well. I'll make a motion to approve resolution eight ninety-eight in the matter of Amendment Two, to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Department of Corrections.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, next one.
This is a separate one, right?
Right, the new one that's handed out.
Is it, is it very much different than what was in our bag yet?
No.
Word for word.
No, but I didn't have the, the one back, and I thought it gives you opportunities, if I just send closer.
This is eight fifty-six?
Yep. Yeah, ordinance, so it's cleaned up, everything's cleaned up, so it's fine.
So, and legal counsel's reviewed this?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so. I think this is great, I think, you know, hopefully give everybody in the community, you know, better service, just through all the competing market, uh, everybody will continue to up, up their game, so to speak, with what they're providing to their customers. I, I think we need approval by title only, so I make a motion to approve ordinance eight fifty-six, and by title only.
I'll second that. Do we have to read it? Not if you approve it by title only, and it's unanimous, okay, if it's not unanimous.
Certainly don't want to read through the whole thing.
No, she's not, I can do. Don't you think?
Okay, so, no, I had to check that out, I couldn't read that.
I move that we approve ordinance number eight fifty-six, and ordinance granting to light-speed networks in, a non-exclusive franchise and privileged to use public rights away within the town of Lakeview for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating a fiber-optic telecommunications facility within the town of Lakeview.
Motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have that? Or it must be further back?
It's right behind. Can you grab the ordinance?
I couldn't put the water master plan in.
That's the water master, right there, right there.
This one, okay, well, this is the one, we got the twenty thousand dollar grant on?
Right, and what it will be for is to update the water master plan. Our master plan's fifteen years old, so it will update it. And I'm working currently on getting a request for proposals, uh, add out, which is one of the processes you have to go through. And then, uh, we'll set up the bid opening dates, you know, or, you know, when people submit proposals, and then we'll go through, have a selection committee, uh, to determine who will be the engineer to do this project, so.
Okay, good.
Then that's three seconds.
Yeah, that is, that's, good work.
Nice job, twenty, twenty thousand, just to do the plan. Isn't that, I don't know, it makes me worry about what it's gonna cost to implement the plan, I guess.
Oh, yeah. This depends on what we do, that's all.
But the, the plan's probably pretty general speaking, take your old plan, and look at what your resources still are, see where you're lacking, especially from what, um, Jeff Marshall said on one of the wells, that's not really operable, but right now, in its current condition, it's, I don't know, just an inventory, so to speak.
Well, and we had talked about, and Jeff was here too, about, you know, updating the lines for the tank, and just some of the projects. And what the plan will do is actually identify them, prioritize them, so we kind of can go through and say, okay, we need to do this, and that's gonna cost how much money, so we have to get, you know, a loan, you have to change the rate, you know, there's gonna be a lot of stuff with it, um, but it's kind of the first step, so then you can, after you have your plan put together, then you can reevaluate your water rates, if we need to change those, um, you know, but this is kind of like that foundation piece to get our system up to be going, so, yeah.
Okay, good.
A step forward is always a step forward.
Is this?
Manager's report. You don't have enough, there's not more to add.
No, we've just been working on a lot of projects, I'm trying to get the budget all figured out, so that we can start a budget process, and, um, I don't have the exact date yet, but been working on that in the evenings, so that we can.
Do we, um, start that April sometime?
Actually. Are you gonna go on a meeting?
No, I'm not, but I can arrange that for budget meetings.
Well, hopefully, it'll be good enough that you'll just say, I didn't like this, and, because I don't think it's gonna be too much different than last year. There'll be a few changes, but right now, it's gonna be very conservative, that's all I can say.
I, almost has to be, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Do you? I hope, uh, I hope a lot of people understand that, we've got to make sure that they do.
Yeah.
Mayor Council updates, um, I'll start off, I met with the group for the Saturday Market, and, uh, right now, they're looking for a vice president, but Karen Zemiro will be their new secretary treasurer, to take over for Karen Bunch. But, um, they had some safety concerns about closing the parking lot from ten, well, when everybody gets unloaded, fuller vehicles out, they want to close the parking lot off, because you've got elderly people up and down through the parking lot, the city parking lot. For the fact is, when they're doing this, they have a flea market also going on, people drive through there, and kids don't watch, and some people don't watch, drive them through there. And so what they want to do is just during, from ten to two, close the parking lot off till the market is done, and then open it back up. But they want it for safety reasons, and I can't see any reason why we can't allow that for those four hours. Because on the south side of the city.
I'm not sure, I didn't think it was already closed, but evidently there's.
Well, I always thought it was, but it's not, because I asked them about it.
So are they not leasing the parking lot from us?
Yeah, the city parking lot.
So if they lease it, why can't they just handle that themselves, close the parking lot?
Would we have to put a, a barrier?
And they can put a.
Tape or something, or a barrier, or just say, no parking?
They'd probably have to find something to put up.
I thought the lease was for, it's, my understanding, I didn't even know there was a lease, but I thought the usage of the property was over next to the mountain, uh, it's not out in the parking lot.
Well, that's.
There is no, there, there never has been, when I've been to the Saturday Market, any displays or any, anything out in the park.
Sometimes it goes clear down that whole side where the trees are, because that's a shade.
Well, okay, they're, 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 but they, what they were supposed to be is good line coverage.
They, they do use that also, but.
That's where it was.
Yeah, worried about, you know, young kids running out in front of somebody, or someone, they drive through the parking lot, because some people, I've been there, and some people really need to slow down, you know, they just.
They shouldn't be driving through.
No, so, that was their concern, was to, you know, close that parking lot off to, before somebody does get hurt.
Maybe, I, I think you're right, I think they've got the terms of using it, I don't know if it's a lease or how that works, but they have the right to use it, but so they take care of locating those entrances and exits, and have a sign made, says no parking inside. I, I, because you're right, if, if, uh, some of those people that have their booths along the side, and it starts to go down the other side too, you really don't want any car traffic through there.
What I would suggest, Ray, is having them build, or having someone for, for them build something like they have down at the school, where it's just made out of two-by-sixes, and it's got wheels on one end, they can pick it up, roll it out of the way, you know, for times that they're not using, and store it up against the building or something, and then on Saturdays, they just roll it back over there.
I'll bet they could talk to, uh, Fred Smith, and he could get his kids to do something like that. He'd probably build a one for the school.
Probably.
So can we report back to them, tell them we're okay with that, because I, I think that's most appropriate, safe, and, and. So just before we've got consensus to go ahead and do that, there, at most times.
Okay, the other thing they would ask about is the free swim day, and Amy said that it's usually the first Saturday in June, and, because they usually set up up there, set their Saturday market up there during that time.
Are we having the kickoff to summer in the pool this year? Why, why didn't you?
Why, why didn't you know that? It's one of your duties. Miss Park Committee? Gosh, you guys. I don't know. We haven't even talked about it.
I'm sure we'll probably try to have some kind of.
Well, for one thing, who, is it swim team or somebody has the, has?
They did the barbeque doing.
Yeah, they do it. They do a barbeque. I was trying to think if they did that through the.
They did those walk-in walkovers last year.
Yeah, and they, they, that's a big fundraiser for them. So we really should get in touch with them and see what, what their plans are, what we can do to help them do it maybe.
Well, I don't even know if they have a coach yet.
I don't know if they have a pool manager yet.
No, I did, I had two applications.
Oh, good.
So I did put it out. So, and there's another girl that I think she's going to bring hers in. And I think she's actually a teacher.
She's an aide.
And that would be awesome. That's somebody that actually works for that and.
I, I think it's, you know, if we can find somebody that's reliable that does this, it's a perfect fit. Because, you know, you work up to June and then you have, and they're not paid in summer. So if you're an aide or a, you know, a, a non-certified person, then your three months in the summer is no salary. So to get that three months doing something like the pool is a perfect fit, if it's the right person. And Jeff said he was going to get one of his people to get certified, go to that school. Is that still going?
He already did.
Oh, we have it. Okay, good. Because that's, that's always the variable.
Yeah, and they'll take care of the chemicals and stuff. Our employees will take care of the chemicals and then we'll have a pool manager, you know, and then go from there. So.
During budget time, I'd be better to have a lot of this pool discussion, hours of operation, stuff like that. But with school not getting out until, what is it, the fourteenth of September?
It's late.
At June. Usually we don't open the pool until like the week after school gets out, like completely open. Because we do this first day, first Saturday, but then it's still usually closed because people are getting on training and stuff.
Yeah, usually.
We gotta do this a little sooner because, I mean, there's no chance the swim team can be ready for the first meet. And there's only five meets a year. So, you know, for them to even spend all the, and I'm not, you know, suggesting that we change our rates or anything for pool team, but, you know, this is going to be a shortened season if we open later. We really, I mean, the kid, the pool team could be, or swim team could be meeting in the mornings, before school starts, or even in the evenings. You know, it'd be really nice to have that open soon. There's all.
We have personnel.
Yeah, we just have to have the personnel, but they would have to get trained sometime in May on their own.
You have to have something slightly less than frigid water as well.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but we're just going to be running out of days is all I'm saying. If we start twenty second of June, that's just, I mean, there's a meet already on that first weekend.
Is, is the training period for the lifeguards three days or two days? Is it three? So.
And we put that out. Didn't you get that one in?
The manager one?
Or the, the lifeguard one? No, I wasn't sure if he was set on eighteen or if he wanted to do.
I don't think that lifeguards have to be eighteen.
They don't. We were just talking about it internally to get maturity, but yet on the other hand, that might not make any big difference. And.
Well, I think that when we talk to, it's really past practice, past practice. We've hired quite often some kids who are in their freshman year and, or have finished their freshman year sometimes. But it's, one of the things that we justify the huge deficit we come up with every year for the pool is that it's entry level jobs for our kids. And so we need to do a better job, number one, because of my little soap opera here, of training them how to be good employees and, you know, what a good employee means and how the work's positioned. But there is that. But every year we say, okay, you're going to be your freshman, you're the low man on the totem pole, and you will only be used when we absolutely have to have you. So don't expect this to be, you know, a regular schedule. And then somebody tries to work them in like everybody else, but they're the, and sometimes we ended up last year with totally inexperienced people up there for night swim. Well, no, you have to keep your experienced people. And I don't, I know the couple of them that were experienced from last year will be back. I'm hoping that, you know, a couple of others come back. But I really want us to establish some very clear rules, clear policies for that.
And that's why I thought if we got an adult, an adult supervisor manager for the pool. And we have to, because I, you know, just from some of my understanding last year, you know, with the deposits and different things, you know, in that it was just no this, this, this. And so you have to have the policies and procedures and this.
Yeah.
And that's why I kind of want somebody that's maybe more mature. Not that you couldn't find a good person, but I put in there.
It's very difficult.
Yeah.
Because you've got all kids in your care.
Yeah, that's, so we put twenty-one years or older on the advertisement. And like I said, we've gotten to, and I've talked to the one in the school. So I don't know if she's, I haven't seen her bring it back in, but.
We can talk about that when we.
Yeah, okay.
And hours and stuff. But I agree that we need to open it up before.
And we may have. And that's going to be the hard part, is three day training, get them to.
She comes here.
They come here.
She comes here to train them.
It's a commitment. And if you advertise to get those lifeguards hired sooner, they'll commit to do it.
And she does.
They have to if they want the job.
There's a scheduling job there. Because this kid is still in school when we're saying you have to be trained before the end of school. And so three day training. So that's like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
They have to have water in the pool.
And they have to have water in the pool first. And it has to be ready, so.
In the pool. And then the CPR and book in here, elastic. And they do a lot of CPR up there too. And I believe that sometimes Lisa Cahill has helped, has helped in the past, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But.
We are working on that. So we're starting.
But those are, those are issues. You know, we talked about goal setting. This is ours.
Well, if we do the three day, the first weekend in June, and we don't open it up for two more weeks, allow the swim team to go ahead and use the pool to do, to get ready for swim meets in between.
I just don't know why you wouldn't want to open it early. I mean.
I would just.
We can talk about it.
Anyway, we'll, we'll work on that.
We need to, we need to schedule.
A work session on it and work out some things.
Okay.
Um, do you have anything?
There's, I wanted to comment on the chambers efforts with Irish Days. I thought it was one of our most successful. We certainly had a whole lot more activities. We had more people seemingly involved. And so I thought it was very well done. And I think the chamber took the lead on, in some ways, in that they had a wonderful committee of people combined of the Seroptimus and Chamber and the Community Members. I think it's April twentieth now. But there is after hours at the Chamber, which if you see the little logo for that, you know that there will at least be spirits served and probably munchies and get acquainted and setting some, getting some interaction going between members and the Chamber.
Do you know what time that started? I saw it, but I can't remember. Is it five thirty? Is it something?
Usually tries to get it after businesses close or something like that. So it would be within that. And I don't think we bar the door. So, you know, if somebody goes in till six, it'd be okay. But we'll double check. We'll have a meeting before that. I also have an appointment tomorrow with Mr. Winters. And we're going to discuss some information about the railroad. I've done some checking with, I guess, Mr. Winters would think, the opposition. But so to see how, what the rail, Lake Rail position is. And so I, I want to check with Brad. I did mention the fact that neither Suzanne Stewart nor I had ever been informed in the last two years, I think, of meetings. And Mr. Berman said he had no idea we were on that committee. And I said, well, what is, we've been meeting with users and that sort of thing. And I said, so you're out of compliance with the mandatory advisory committee? And he said, well, he didn't think it was mandatory. So we'll find out. But Mr. Winters certainly knew that we were on that committee. So anyway, we have a few things to discuss. And this is such a vital thing for us.
Was handed out the Chamber invitation and it goes from four to seven.
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
Okay.
Put it down on your calendar.
Good. Thanks, Rebecca.
Is it twenty?
Good.
Eight foot tall.
I was like, what is?
Yeah, thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, for me, did attend the chip advisory council meeting. The best thing I got of that, the summer food and park program is going to be ran again. It's been a few years since we haven't had it. So it's very exciting. Chrissy Albertson is in contact on that. They are looking for some volunteers. Her number is two one one four, extension three nine eight. Yeah, yeah. So pretty exciting. I volunteered a few people around here.
Two, three nine?
Twenty-one, fourteen, and then extension three nine eight.
Oh, three nine.
Yeah. So that was, that was one of the best things I heard there is, you know, a couple of grants that they were awarded, especially for the dental ceilings and stuff for these kids and stuff. So a lot, a lot of good things happening. They're doing a great, great job down there.
So she's really good.
A question. When we had it before, the daycare center was there, so that kitchen was open. Are they going to be able to use that kitchen?
Not sure, yeah.
Not in our.
I mean, if they're expecting that, we own it, but I.
No, 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 no. The daycare kitchen across the street.
Right. That was the old head start.
The old head starts on my side.
But Y M C A was helping with it, is what they're talking about.
Yes, but I did the summer food program for four years.
And that kitchen is, I mean, it's limited to begin with, but since nobody's been in there, I think not on using that, we best find out.
Yeah, so it was.
I don't, I don't believe they have any intention of. When I talked to her, she didn't say anything about using. She just wanted to.
They were even set up an application, actually.
Sack lunches from the hospital.
Actually, I was at another committee and we did talk about using the hospital or some other facility like that because there's certain requirements, as Don can tell you, that have to go. There's so many meals that you have to have available and everything else. So what we did talk about, and I know that they were researching all of everything and trying to find a kitchen that would work. And we talked about like using the elementary school or the, the hospital. So I know that they are working on that. I don't know how far it's gone.
And just FYI, that, you know, head start should be open by Vancouver as far as that facility. And they're going to have a nice kitchen setup. I had a walkthrough on that. That might be another.
But are, are they open in the summer?
I don't know.
Might be something.
Not unless they get that preschool or what they, they're going for that zero, two, three.
Right.
But I don't know that they're going to start with that.
So I don't know either.
But, but that is a good question. I don't know if they would be open.
I, I know that it's all in the works.
Yeah.
Sounds to me like having it at the school would be kind of a central.
The P D V school?
Yeah.
I think that would be a really good spot.
Michael, just lastly too, I'll be going to CPR, you know, training as a volunteer coach for, for baseball as well. And also, you know, member of the community with lots of children, school board deadline to sign up for that was last Thursday. And I made the choice to sign up to be on the school board. So. Well, just about that. Who knows?
I don't have anything else to say.
Yeah, well, we discussed with my wife and decided to do it.
You really need one more activity.
Yeah, I know. I, I had Monday nights open, so. Twice a month, Monday nights. That's when the school board gets.
Mike, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
That's mine, isn't it? My other son, um, go ahead.
They are bringing back the essential training for elected officials or elected officials training. It's going to be in Redmond and I believe so.
Nineteen of, people live in April?
Yeah.
I think it's a.
Now what, essential. It's for council elected to be felt, elected official officials. And the league puts it on.
Don't you think it's a little late for me?
Never. That's what I say, never get.
But it's in Redmond on April what?
I mean, and what's been interesting is there's been a lot of conversations with other cities because the way that the head of, my colleague from the league, he's the director, and he had it so that it was strictly for council and mayors. And no staff was allowed. And a lot of us wrote back and said, you know, we try to have a cohesive relationship. So you're putting a barrier between, you know, because how can you build a relationship if you're not? And so anyway, he changed his policy because he got lots of complaints on that, you know.
So are we talking like getting the bus or something going? What are we doing?
It starts at eight thirty before or something. And they have another one after that. Their little regional meeting will be after that, that night. So if you want to sign up, I mean, you know. And, I don't know. I think you were going to go at nine and four because it's eight thirty in Redmond, so.
I get, I get up there in Redmond. And of course, we had to go up anyway. But then I get a phone call from Alberta and tell me to cancel the meeting.
Yeah, last time. Because of weather. So that was kind of bad. So anyway, but if you are in, I said, I don't know. Now, are you signed radio?
I'm going, so.
Yeah, just let me know. I think I'll probably go.
I'll, I'll check because I never can remember what I'm doing.
Well, we're just telling.
You guys have noticed how Travis did his report here? You know, got the call type and the location and received and who was dispatching. I really liked that, but.
That's a bit more detailed.
Yes.
These are all.
So we're just getting to learn our new system and some of the reports that it generates for us. This is a couple of ones that I pulled real quick this afternoon. I, I misread the agenda, so I thought I had failed to provide a report, which, and we did last month because we, we had errors in our system. We couldn't actually pull reports last month for you. And so I just printed that off real quick. And so just give you guys an idea of what we have available. And if there's something that you like, then we can provide that in the future.
Question.
Yeah.
Now, is there a place where you can put on here, you know, the action, you know, if it was resolved, not resolved, rest, anything like that? Is there?
Not, not, I, maybe. I'll have to see if they can modify some of those reports for us. They say that we can customize them for us and, and change some things. So at, at this time, that's the way the report comes. So I can talk to I S and see what we can change.
Because I think, I think it can be. I know like other programs I use big with.
It could be a different report that'll be there as well.
Speaking of results, it's nice to read that a couple of major burglaries have been solved and people have been charged. And it's been quite interesting. Now, the examiner must be thrilled at what they're getting from the courts on their, you know, grand jury indictments and people who are charged and arrested and that sort of thing. It's a noticeable difference from last year.
Yeah, hopefully we'll, I, I think that one of the two that is responsible for some of our big burglaries is slated to go to prison. I don't think the other one can due to the level of charges and sentencing guidelines and all the stuff that they have to deal with over there. And so, but I think one of the two will be, the other one should be on some pretty serious formal probation that will help keep us, keep him under somebody's thumb and have some more accountability for him. So.
That's good.
Be a good thing.
Do you have any leads on the graffiti yet?
Uh, no. We thought we had a, a can of spray paint that is responsible for it. Whether it is or not, we're not certain. The, the last time that particular spray paint was sold, that doesn't mean it wasn't stolen from one of our local businesses. But last time it was sold was like last August to one of our prominent business owners here in town. And we know that people have been responsible for it. And so whether or not it was stolen from, from the store or not, we don't know. But other than that, we, we haven't had anything. We've checked surveillance videos in the area, trying to find something suspicious to include going all the way down. suspicious, to include going all the way down to like Barney Brothers, and anybody who has camera systems in the area, unfortunately, this time, we haven't been able to find anything.
Do we have a coordinate on graffiti? Do we have a coordinate on graffiti?
I don't know where, but it's never really been a problem in the past.
No, we've, we've never had that problem.
We get occasionally down there at the grain silos, and, you know, the trains, or up the canyon, but really, inside the city, um, up until recently, we've really never had a problem with it, we did have a couple of kids that were responsible for quite a bit of it, we caught them, they were held accountable, um, and then this was the latest one, so, we, we, it's usually pretty random, and we usually try and get it covered up pretty quick, so it doesn't breed.
Yeah, that's the way to be.
Yeah.
But if we need to, you know, we can look at it later.
It might be worth looking at to see, it's, it's maybe a good idea, before we catch anybody, let them know that this, these are the repercussions of it.
Yeah, there's two different state laws that apply for applying graffiti, one would be criminal mischief, which is a criminal charge, and the other one is actually applying graffiti, if you charge them with applying graffiti, which is first time offense kind of a thing, um, it comes with community service, and, you know, usually requires them to go down and clean up their own graffiti, uh, we have in the past, and I, and I know we still have it somewhere at the department, um, some graffiti removing chemical that we got, that actually works fairly decent, uh, that they, that we've given to kids or whatever, um, actually, the last time we did it, we did it through the work group program, and to go and remove graffiti, so, uh, we do have that chemical at the office that we keep hold of for, you know, situations where we can catch them, but if it's someone that's responsible for multiple offenses, then you can look into criminal, criminal mischief and actually charge them criminally, you know, for, for what they're doing. It's nice to have those options for a kid that just was stupid one night, and, you know, then if you got someone that's continuing to do it, he can still hold and get them.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll probably close the meeting at, uh, four fifty-two.